This meeting to order and we will start off with item one, which is the roll call. Eric, are we good to go as far as that sound? Okay. All right. So Carrie? Yeah. Uh, Joe? Nope. Gabe?
Mark Seaborn.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Shetland, Andy O'Vie.
Great. Thank you. Kirsten? Thank you. Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Thank you. Pam?
Pam Farrelly to Marlboro.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Kucheski Marlboro.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Stoffey Marlboro.
Great. Thank you. Heather?
Heather Summer Hebron.
Awesome. Thank you. And Mike Morris Hebron. All right. We'll all stand. We'll move on to item two, the Pledge of Allegiance in the back there.
I pledge allegiance to the Black, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. It brings us to item three, and if you bear with me for just one minute, I have to read a bit. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at the Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this time, I would open up to the floor with people that are present. Anyone here to give a public comment? Hey, seeing none, I'll go turn it over to online. Is there anyone online that is present for public comment? Anybody, Eric? Raise your digital hand or otherwise make yourselves known. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item four. Item four is the addition and deletion of an agenda items. Is there any motions from anyone on the board to add or delete an agenda item? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to student, uh, sorry, item five, the Student Representative Reports. Why don't you go ahead and kick us off first, Ava?
Thanks. Um, so I can switch this off. Uh, we just go back to break. I'm sharing a quarter board right now. Uh, eleven of the teachers actually just got their PSAT scores back, so that's very eventful. I've been a while about that right now. Uh, also, um, juniors are also like starting their college application process, touring colleges, all that. Um, so it's certainly on everyone's minds. And, uh, there was actually a Spanish trip during, uh, spring break that I think students are just coming back from right now.
Great. Awesome. All right. Thank you. Roland? I'm sorry, Roland?
I have no words. So, um, first I just want to start off by, um, talking about how at least for the seniors, I haven't touched with a lot of the juniors, but the seniors have had a very good April break. A lot of them, I actually found, um, took a lot of Welcome Day tours for colleges. Cause I was talking to a few who is, who were wearing the sweatshirts and shirts for their, um, college that they're going to, and a lot of them did attend those Welcome Days, and they officially committed during April break. So I actually have a nice, uh, URI logo right here for, um, because I did, I actually did commit today. So.
URI?
Yes, I did.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, just it's exciting times for the seniors. Um, also wanted to touch on the fact that there are AP exams that will be coming up in the beginning of May. Um, by the time we meet next, uh, we have, would have all been taken care of. So, yep, the anxiety is for sure for all those kids who do have tests. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to say, I didn't have this originally planned, but I just wanted to direct us to the Inquiry Academy. As somebody who, you know, was part of that program for the two years, it's a memory for me that I'll definitely remember forever because of all the great people involved in this program. And I'm so happy to see students like yourself and obviously the teachers who are still, who still continue to make such a great program like that happen. So obviously, thank you, and thank you for coming to present. And, uh, yeah, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Great. Thank you. What's the URI mascot?
The Rams. So.
I feel like shit is gonna change.
I'll probably, yeah, yeah, I'll probably, I'll be used to that mascot.
Standing.
Yeah. Uh, okay. So, uh, a couple of things that moves us on to item, um, six, which is the Chair Report.
So, uh, a couple of things, we did get the, uh, notice for the annual, uh, meeting for May 1st, which will, uh, also get us the budget referendum on May 2nd. That's all been sent out to the town clerks for the, for the three towns. Uh, and we should see that publication in the River East here shortly. Um, wanted to congratulate and recognize some Ram High School students. Uh, Kalen Calhoun and Lauren, and I'm going to butcher this a little bit, so I apologize. Is it Fagie? Aggie? Who were, they were recipients of the Connecticut Association of Schools Award, Arts Award. Uh, it's an award that recognizes two students from each task member school who excel in either visual or performing arts. Apparently, those students were joined by Ram staff and administration at the Aquaturf on the 4th, and they were recognized along with other students from across the state, which is, uh, exceptional. And, uh, congratulations to those students and to the, um, to all of our staff that helped them along the way. Um, also, April 5th was National Para Educator Appreciation Day. And, uh, it's important to recognize that, uh, there's some really, um, significant contributions that are made by the professionals here at Ram, both at the middle school and at the high school. And, uh, I just want to thank them on behalf of the Board of Education. I know that proms are coming up here. I'm dealing with that in my own home. So, uh, the one thing that I would just, uh, hope to share with everybody and implore both students as well as, as, uh, parents to just, you know, remember that those are also times where people make, sometimes make bad decisions. And let's hope that everybody thinks twice and makes good decisions and has a great time. And, uh, everybody goes and has fun and then also gets home safe. So, uh, let's just make sure we take the time to talk to everybody about that and make sure that we're, we're doing all the right things so that we have everybody back. I think that is all I have. So we'll move us on to the, uh, item seven, which is the Report of the Superintendent.
Great. So I'll start off, uh, by saying welcome back to Rowan and Ava and all the other students. Um, I hope, I'm glad to hear that everybody had a restful spring break. Uh, I did as well. I took the first full week off that I've taken since coming into Ram, and it was quite lovely, actually. So, uh, it was nice to have the detachment from, from work and from school. So it's important that we live that balanced life. Um, I will start by just sharing some news with the board. Uh, we had been scheduled to have our, uh, the well, the second attempt of the well drilled last week. Unfortunately, uh, that was, that did not come to fruition. Um, I don't quite have a date where it's being rescheduled, but Mike Schleyhoff is working with Eastern Drilling Company to schedule, hopefully get them in sooner rather than later. Uh, as nice as it is to get the rain that we got today, unfortunately, that doesn't help us when it comes to drilling because we need to make sure that the ground is able to support all of the heavy machinery and equipment without tearing up our, uh, lawns even more. Um, so, so hopefully that will get done sometime in the next coming weeks, but I will obviously keep the board appraised. Um, in the vein of recognizing some accomplishments for our students, I'd like to share that the Ram chapter of the National Business Honor Society held their induction ceremony on March 23rd for, uh, the 17 students who were inducted into the National Business Honor Society. In order to qualify for membership, students must be juniors or seniors and have an overall GPA of at least a 3.0 and a GPA of at least a 3.5 with their business courses. And they have to have, uh, have taken a minimum of three business courses or in their third business course. Uh, the purpose of the group is to encourage service learning, foster leadership skills and character development, and promote ethical and social business growth. And I just want to congratulate those new members that joined the 10 existing members that currently, that have been in the group. Um, I also want to, uh, point out the, the incredible talent that our middle school students displayed at the, um, at the coffee shop that was, or Coffee House, I apologize, that was held on, uh, March 30th here at the high school cafeteria. I hearken back to really one of my first introductions to Ram last, uh, last spring when I was onboarding and, and trying to come in was the Evening of the Arts, which I want to make sure I tell everybody, uh, cause I'm looking, it's, uh, June 1st, and it is an amazing event. If you've never been to the Evening of Arts before, it's fantastic. Uh, I thought that that was an incredibly impressive event, and it was, but it was amazing to see the same level of talent in the middle school Coffee House. Um, we had our jazz band performing, and we had soloists performing a variety of, you know, singing, uh, music. It was phenomenal. And then there was the, the, um, the fine arts that were being displayed. There was, uh, digital artwork, um, just things that I am very jealous because I have no artistic ability in, in either the fine or the performing arts. It was amazing to see, um, the talents of our middle school students. And I just want to applaud and thank the, um, the faculty and staff in the Fine and Performing Arts Departments who really brought that, um, that event to life. It was great. A, a couple of things, just really fun events that took place over the past couple of weeks as well. The senior class hosted a fundraiser, which was a dodgeball tournament. Uh, that was on March 31st at the high school. Uh, I, I was, was asked by a couple of different people, "Hey, Colin, are you going to play in the, the dodgeball tournament?" And I thought for a fleeting second about it. And then I thought the optics of the superintendent of schools, um, hitting a student with a dodgeball wouldn't be so good. So I said, "Nope, I don't think that's a good idea." But I did go to the event. It was excellent. I was the, uh, master of ceremonies. I will say that the board was represented very, very well at the dodgeball tournament. Rowan was on, I think, the second place team.
Yeah.
Um, and you guys did phenomenal. They had like a run where his team went 5-0. And, and finally, we actually, it was, it was play until you lose. They didn't lose, but we had to give them a break because they played for like 35 minutes straight. And I think they would have needed oxygenated seats and trainers.
I received a good workout. It was great.
It was, it was, it was a really, really fun event. Um, and just really, uh, a fun, a fun night for everybody that was involved. In a similar vein, the high school, um, business and marketing students put on a three versus three basketball tournament, the week before spring break as well, which was also fun. Uh, that is something that I decided to lace up the tennis shoes and, and, uh, try to represent the old, the old people in the crew. So Chris Mater, Dan Trudeau, and myself created a team. We were the Boards of Education, get the pun. So we were the Education. Uh, we had a great time playing, uh, against, uh, several student teams, as well as some, some mixed teams of staff and students, and, and it was just a, a very, very fun and enjoyable event. Uh, I didn't, our team unfortunately didn't win. Um, uh, and I needed a lot of ibuprofen the next day because it's, as Rowan said about the dodgeball tournament, it was quite a workout for me as well. I'm not quite as young as my, I used to be, but it was, again, a super fun experience. I want to make sure also that I recognize and congratulate, um, Carl Jancis. He is a, one of our middle school teachers, a part of the Inquiry Team as well. Carl has been chosen as a recipient for the 2023 Fund for Teachers Grant. Uh, Fund for Teachers is a grant program that supports teachers in enhancing their knowledge and skills to provide high, high-quality learning for all students. Um, Carl is going to be partnering with a teacher from Waterbury Public Schools, and they are going to be traveling to the Panamanian Jungle to work with the Kuna Tribe. Uh, there they will explore various indigenous art techniques, and, uh, and they will conclude their trip with additional learning in Costa Rica. The Fund for Teachers Program, uh, covers all of the costs associated with that trip. Um, one of our teachers who had been a previous grant recipient, um, did a presentation actually at our convocation to try to muster up some interest in teachers going, and, and we're super happy that Carl took the opportunity to apply for it. Um, and I'm hoping that this is good, you know, going to be a perpetual thing because it's, uh, it's a pretty amazing opportunity for teachers and staff to be able to, you know, choose a, a professional development opportunity of their own, um, and, and, and go and have a great time. Uh, so congratulations to Carl for that. The, uh, last thing that I will mention is, um, at our previous board meeting, at our last board meeting, a concern, uh, was brought up during public comment about early start times of, of the schools. Um, I'm certainly familiar with the research. Some, some research was cited saying, you know, it's beneficial for students to, uh, certainly older adolescent students to have, um, more sleep. The health benefits, the learning benefits of a later start time. Um, I'm not much of a morning person, so, um, I, I certainly recognize the benefit of getting more sleep. Um, and again, I'm not going to argue with the research. Um, I, I saw the struggles of it with my own children when they were going through high school. My son was hard to get out of bed. Uh, but I also am aware, uh, of school districts that have channeled a significant amount of time and energy and effort into exploring the feasibility of having a later start time for their secondary schools and have run into several logistical challenges that have prevented them from making any substantive changes. Uh, in our general area, in our regional area, um, I, I did a, a brief survey of, of, uh, to, to get an idea of where other schools are. The 11 public school districts that responded to my inquiry, uh, their start time is between 7:30 and, uh, I'm sorry, 7:20 and 7:30. There were a couple outliers that might have been at 7:40, but the majority of them were, really fell in line where, where ours are. Um, there were two East Con Magnet schools with later start times, one at 8, one at 8:30. Um, I just thought it was important also to highlight that as a regional school district, if we were to entertain or want to travel down the road of, um, exploring a later start time, we couldn't make those decisions in isolation or in a bubble. Um, we obviously share transportation with our elementary districts, and as soon as our students are dropped off, uh, here at Ram, they immediately, um, segue in and start their elementary runs in order to get their elementary school students, uh, to school on time. So it would have to be something that we really have to work collaboratively with other districts and even see if there were, that the elementary districts were interested in it. I, I felt it was important to talk about this, just bring it back to the board. Um, I think that if, if anybody on the board or if the board is a collective group, um, wanted to explore this further, I just, I would recommend that it either be put on an agenda for a few, for an upcoming board meeting, or it could potentially be something that, um, the board says to the, um, Program Communications Subcommittee, you know, "Hey, could you look into this?" Um, I did get a chance to speak to a superintendent in, uh, of Guilford Public Schools where they spent three years, uh, exploring it as a possibility, and, uh, in the end moved their start time, I think, by 15 minutes later. Um, so, uh, you know, he, he talked about, you know, all of the challenges associated with it. Again, so I just, again, if it's anything that, you know, you as a collective group, uh, then certainly I will take, uh, take the marching orders that are given to me and do what you ask me to do. Um, and that concludes my, uh, report.
Okay. All right. That brings us to item eight, which is the Consent Agenda. And if you'll bear with us, we have quite a few minutes to, uh, to approve here. Uh, so, um, item 8.1 is the approval of the minutes from the March 20th, the April 3rd. I'm sorry, the March 20th meeting, the April 3rd hearing, and then the April 3rd special meeting. So it, uh, I'll just run through these, and then if there's any discussion on any of them, we certainly can bring it up, but I'll ask to just get the motions onto the floor before we, uh, enter in any discussion on them. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March 20th, 2023 Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
I got you. I'll take you as the second. Sue, thank you. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll use a voice vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that carries unanimously. Second, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2023 hearing. Thank you, Gabe. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Uh, I finally, uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2023 Special Board Education Meeting. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
Second. Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously. Item 8.2 is the approval of the resignation letter from Jan Shortz, the HR journalist and administrative assistant to the Superintendent, which is referenced in enclosure 8.2. Uh, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resignation letter of Jan Shortz.
Someone?
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
A second.
Who was that? Is that you, Carrie?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also carries.
Yeah. Just, I just want to say that, uh, you know, Jan has been a real asset to me in my short, uh, time here in the district, and I, uh, she'll certainly be missed. Uh, she's been here for 40 years, I believe, and, and certainly, uh, we'll all miss her, so.
Yep, I will too. Uh, which brings us to item nine, the best part of the meeting, the Student Program Spotlight. And tonight we have with us for our item 9.1, the Middle School Inquiry Team. So at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent.
So I just want to say, this is, uh, as you said, I echo your sentiments, um, favorite part of the meeting, and I'm going to, uh, ask Dr. Michael Cerusi as the principal of the, uh, middle school, um, to come on up and, and introduce our, our guests.
Evening, everyone. Um, I'm very happy to be here this evening to present, actually, I'm not. They're going to present. I want to thank first the students. Right, also, Eric. Uh, for support. The Inquiry Program, give you a brief history. I think maybe one person on the board started this program, but. Seven, seven years ago? Seven years. I have to check.
He's talking about you, Sue, just for the record.
Yes, I'm talking about you.
I, I know, and I love the program. I love this part of the meeting, too.
So it was a little over eight or nine years ago that a group of faculty, um, came together, decided, given a charge of, if you could invent a school, what would it look like? And let me tell you, it looks nothing like the Inquiry Program right now. But it was a lot of different ideas. Out of that group of staff, about five or six teachers, two of which were here today, volunteered to actually run a program. We came up with a set of criteria that we thought would work. We modified it over, over time. And it has become known as the Inquiry Program. Orange Team is the other nickname it has because of the hallway. But overall, it's a, it's an interesting program for a group of students that challenges them in different ways. And it's a more personalized program in some ways. And in some ways, because of the teachers' relationships they have, they've been able to do things that it's harder to do on other. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to your team later. Our math teachers, Kim Kane and.
All right, I'm just going to do something. I've got to take the breaks because that's how it works on the inquiry. Uh, I actually approached them and said, "We need to do a presentation to the board. Do you have some ideas?" And off they went. I, I had very little to do with it. They knew exactly what they wanted to do, and they put it all together. So this is their work, um, with a little polish, but this is them. So I'm going to introduce them. This is Adam Friswatz, Julia Benedetto, Adam is 7th grader, 8th grader, Sikra Hart is 8th grader, Monday Kuchar is 7th grader, and Notsen Ryan is 8th grader. You're the first one? So they're going to pull your slides up, and you're going to talk about what.
So what is Inquiry? Inquiry is a mixed team of 7th and 8th grader. We do a lot of hands-on activities and reinforce units in these classes, like math and science labs that are interdisciplinary in these classes. We have, we use critical thinking skills a lot, especially in social studies in terms of debates, meaning or analyzing literature and a lot of research-based personal projects. Also, English, physical discussions, analyzing literature as well in English, and readers' conference. Uh, Inquiry Academy takes a lot of interdisciplinary approaches, which connects learning amongst subjects. For example, um, we did ancient civilizations, cultural societies. It tied in with our number line in math, or at least in regular math, second. So in science, we learned as well, um, in math. And the Met Museum label project that we had in English tied to social studies, research about Greek art. Inquiry is open to students who want to learn new things and are open to different learning, uh, learning opportunities. For example, it gives our projects and an assortment of field trips and experiences that you wouldn't be able to have other teams. Um, so basically, it's, basically, it's a. So that, like, every student can get to scale. Um, so, uh, target, we are having, we find the age of students by the.
So another example of field trip is Inquiry Academy. We get many chances to interact with the world around us. Um, earlier in the year, we went to New York City and visited the Met and MoMA. And what, uh, tying into what we learned in the studies, which was about Greek art, we got to chose, choose a piece of art to present on in the Met in front of strangers and our classmates, which introduced us to public presentation. And, um, there were many academic experiences presented there that are not normally shown in the classroom, and many other teams don't get to experience.
So we have a unique little, like, juvenile hour. And what we get to do is choose kind of a question or something we want to research, and so to, and do a presentation on it. And then there are very broad. Some of the projects are, like, on, uh, organizing blood drives, just other community service things. The person who wants to fish, and so we got fish tank, lots of different projects. And this benefits us because we get to learn other things that we normally get to learn about at school. And it's, it can be, uh, single-person projects. It's just, it's very helpful for all of us and teaches everybody around us about what we're researching. Yeah, so. Um, I'd say my first project was on false incarceration and false conviction. And my current project is about the different types of races.
Um, my first project was I researched into my family history and found out how my family migrated from Poland to America. And my current project is the first utility of the computer.
So my first project was how do electronics affect the act of crime? My second project was, um, how can we stop pollution and what are ways to do that? My third project was to make a dance to raise money for the Met. And my current project I'm working on is how can genealogists use DNA to find out their family?
I also did a previous project on social anxiety. And last year, I did one on how to build a treehouse and photography.
Um, so the first thing I want to talk about is strategic. Um, but when we do poorly on assignment, a student, a classic teacher, they're very, um, open to hearing what students say, how they can. Um, my second one is the teachers can. In a boundary way, which makes that next. So. Uh, safeness. Um. Teachers can help students be prepared for class. Uh. And if a student is acting poorly, the teacher will politely excuse the, uh, student for a duration of class until. Let back.
Uh, so when I start thinking about that, I'm going to just relax. So in June 2020. And so, um, we dedicated this time to Caesar Peter, uh, to save. Um, students wrote books, many trees, fishes from the home rooms and. Also, one of our. This year, our big project for social studies was the presentation, and last year, it was the stones. And last year, it was the stones. So we did a presentation. There was many different options and things. Caesar Peter's lab, but everything different. And they were presented in different ways at the event. So readers and writers cafe, just to preface, a writer's cafe is when students pick a piece of writing that they have written and they share it with everybody else in the class, the other students in their period. Readers Cafe is when students pick a piece of literature that they'd like and they read an excerpt from that piece. There's a lot of freedom of flexibility when it comes to writers cafes. You have the ability to share your special interests with other kids and you have the ability to educate others depending on what. For example, for my first readers cafe, I read an excerpt from the book, The Book Thief, which is a book about the Holocaust and therefore kind of educated kids about what the Holocaust was kind of like. There's a lot of learning. You learn a lot of skills, like obviously in English class, you learn how to use language, grammar, punctuation properly. So when we do these writers cafes, Mrs. Lynch, the English teacher, gives students certain drinks and desserts to allow us to feel safe and comfortable when we're sharing our writing with students. So it kind of reduces the presentation anxiety, which better helps us feel safe to share our writing, which can be vulnerable at times. So many current and former English students now volunteer for the inquiry programs. Tree lighting and a lot of freshmen now have a lot of. Though honestly, students have done services such as dry drive, up and drive. So shelteredness.
All right. I'd like to open it up to the boards for any questions or any comments.
I, I have one, Mike.
Please go ahead, Sue.
I would love to know how to build a treehouse. That sounded really interesting. But great job. I, I love the program. I can't say enough good things about the program and you all did a great job presenting, so thank you.
I, I have a question. So it's probably a little bit fresher for you, for the seventh graders amongst you, but what, how did you feel like your transition from going from where the, whatever elementary school you came from to, to the middle school? How did, how did you feel like that went? Did you feel comfortable with it?
I think having a drastic change from a regular curriculum to inquiry was kind of stressful, considering that you're going from a school that you've been to your whole entire life to a new one. So obviously, that kind of change was obviously kind of stressful. That usually is for everybody. But I think that because inquiry is such a welcoming academy, especially among the teachers, it was easy to make that kind of accommodation. So it was easy to get over that original anxiety to feel more comfortable coming to sports.
I agree, because of the fact that we're sponsored. It's a very smooth transition, but the teachers kind of guide you to like help find like to help guide.
Yeah, I mean, they give you a bit of a safety blanket first and then they'll teach you independence in.
And for the eighth graders amongst you, what, what's, what is, what are you looking forward to for high school next year? What's, what is the thing that you're most excited about? Excellent presentations, Phil, I might say. Okay, any other questions? Anything else?
I would just like to share the comments if I could.
Please go ahead, Carrie.
So I absolutely love the program, too. And I think that it really puts a lot of ownership on the children to teach them responsibility for themselves. And I think it really puts a trust in them that they can achieve what they want to achieve. So, and I'd also just like to say that all of you guys up there, I think you did a wonderful job with this presentation and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback off of Carrie's comments in that I, I know we have a significant number of pretty distinguished people on the board in different occupations and different skill sets and professions. And but I'm pretty sure they'll all agree in that it's, presentation skills are something that has to be developed and honed and learned. And there was no way at your age that I would have ever been capable of standing up and doing this kind of presentation the way you folks have. And you should be very, very proud of yourself, both with the product that you put together, as well as your confidence and, and that your eloquence and the way that you spoke tonight was, was exceptional, really. So, yeah, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Public speaking is a difficult thing. You did it really, really well. To do it as middle school students, I think it's just terrific.
Yeah, I, I just, I'll just simply say, you know, I agree with everything that was said. You know, I feel like I had a pretty good understanding of what the inquiry team was prior to tonight. But I really feel like having the students go through the process and explain to me what they do and how it's maybe a little different from a traditional middle school team. Just they did an excellent job in capturing the essence of what it is. And, and I commend the teachers and staff. Did you say Dr. Serusi's eight years ago?
Eight and a half.
Eight, eight and a half years ago, that had the foresight to think like we could do something a little different and we could make something a little bit more challenging and rigorous and personalized, I guess I'd also say, for, for students, which is really what learning should be about. It's about, you know, kind of honing your interests. And if any of you are interested in helping develop a budget for next year, maybe doing any presentations, you know.
They still give me ideas. They come, they come for money. That's another great skill, right? Learning how to ask for money. Fantastic. I will, yeah, that'll be a good project. So look, before you guys take off, I didn't do this the last month, which I wish I had done, but you know, we're a learning entity here. Could I get you guys to come up along with your faculty members and Dr. Trucey and take a picture with the board before you go?
Be awesome.
Yeah, you do the, come on up here, maybe the, I could ask the board just to come around front. We're gonna gather in the center here. Come on, if you're on the board. Sorry, you have to get behind me, you're taller than your partner. Awesome, thank you guys. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Excellent, great job.
Thank you for.
Thank you, parents. You'd be very trappy. All right, no more fun stuff. Back to work. Thank you. All right. That moves us on to item 10, which is old business and a update on the strategic planning process.
So so I, I wanted to take an opportunity to talk a little bit with the collective board about just where we are with the strategic planning process. Board members may recall that I think it was probably back in November or December, Diane Dugas from East Con came to the board meeting, presented, kind of talked about what the process would look like, gave a general timeline. I will acknowledge that our timeline did get pushed back a little bit for a couple of reasons. Number one, the budget process, right? I, I think that I will tell you that I, there was a little bit of naivety on my part in not understanding how all-consuming that budget process would be in that January, February time period. And then there were certainly the incidents that we were dealing with as a district, which, which consumed a lot of my time as well. So it really made scheduling a bit of a challenge. But I'm really happy to report that over about the past month, we've had meetings with the strategic planning steering committee. If the board, the board may remember, there's two different groups for the strategic planning process. There is the steering committee and then there is going to be the, the, the planning group or the, or the work group. The steering committee consists of Chairman Morris, myself, Dr. Serusi, Dr. Brazile, Christine Hartwig, our Director of People's Services. And then we have a staff member who's on that committee as well, Greg Lechance, our math curriculum coordinator. And so over the past month, we've gotten together on two occasions. We've had a lot of conversations about, you know, kind of things that we need to do, surveys, focus groups. We spent probably an hour and a half the week before vacation going through and really identifying kind of where we want to target the survey questions, who we're going to, who we're going to distribute those surveys to, when we're going to distribute those surveys. We talked about a communications plan. We, we've just really been talking about very large-scale, kind of broad, high-level things. The next step in the process is to engage in gathering of data. That's going to be getting that qualitative data through the surveys and the focus groups. And in the meantime, we're also working on getting quantitative data, things like test scores, things like climate surveys. So, so a whole host of, of information that we've been working on gathering. And, and we're putting that information together now. We're also then going to start, I, I would anticipate within the next couple of weeks, engaging with the, with the planning committee itself, that planning work group. And, and the planning work group is going to be a, a larger group. Eric, as a member of the board, is going to be on it. Carrie Ferlino is a member of the board, is going to be on it. We have elected officials from the town of Marlboro and Andover that are going to be on it, people who are in the Board of Selectment from those two towns. We're going to have the same administrators that I had mentioned before, Dr. Brazile, Dr. Serusi, Christine Hartwig, myself. We're going to have some teachers and staff, a larger group of teachers and staff, probably like four or five staff members from both schools. We're going to have some parent representatives and also, and we were talking about this earlier, the importance of student voice in, in all that we do. We're going to have students as a member of the, as a member of the, the planning committee. And we're really, that group is going to spend a lot of time really looking at the data, identifying strengths, identifying weaknesses, identifying trends and saying, all right, let's, how, we've identified these strengths. How can we build upon those strengths? All right, we've identified some areas where we could do some improvement and, and let's talk about planning to make improvements in those particular areas. So we're, I really feel like we've got a good, solid foundation. I know, you know, if you want to speak to this as well, you've been on the, as a part of the meetings as well. We're, we're moving in the right direction. I'm excited about the work that we have done and that we've got in front of us. As I said, we're a little bit behind the timeline that we had initially planned on it, but I'm very, I'm very optimistic that we're going to come out of this process with a very well-thought-out strategic plan for the district.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would just throw out there is that I think that it's, it's hard to divorce yourself from the day-to-day when you walk into that conference room meeting at 2:30 or whenever it is and say, okay, I'm going to disconnect from what's happening tomorrow, next week, and even six months from now. And really try to think hard about what, how do we evolve where we are right now to the, you know, call it three-year, five-year plan. And the thing that I would give all of the folks that are involved a lot of credit is being very open to entertaining some very different and new ideas. And I think it was kind of keep, good timing to talk about this at the same time as having this kind of relatively new inquiry program show up. I'm not sure if the inquiry program was born out of the strategic plan or not, but, but it's, it's that, that type of thinking that is, that was going on in that, in that strategic planning meeting and our steering, a steering committee meeting. And I think that is really opening up a lot of different opportunities to talk about, you know, the next, instead of just doing the same old thing, I think really giving everybody an opportunity to really think outside of the box. I hate that phrase, but that really is the way it is to, to try and think of, you know, how do we really move things forward in the next three to five years? So I, I was really impressed with the whole meeting and I think it's, you know, headed in the right direction and I'm, I'm hopeful that, that again, we'll, we'll walk away with a really good plan that sets us up for success for the next three to five years.
Absolutely.
All right, any questions on that? Any comments or concern? Okay, that brings us on to item 11, which is new business and item 11.1, which is the HVAC grants.
So I, I, this is just really exciting news. It's, it's information that I shared with members of the board in a, in an earlier correspondence, but I thought it was just really important enough to talk about and highlight and celebrate at our, at our collective, at our meeting tonight. Board members may recall, I know there's a few new board members, so I think it's good that we go over this for everybody. But board members may recall that the district submitted two applications for a state HVAC grant in the fall of 2022. Grant monies were available to districts for either new projects or to be reimbursed for qualified projects that had been completed within a, a very defined period of time. Board members maybe recall, we, we spoke at length about this and we were excited because we said, oh, my goodness, we have a need for chillers and we have needs for boilers and we have, you know, hey, we're, you know, some of our internal mechanisms are, are nearing the end of their, their anticipated shelf life. The, the problem with going down the direction of a new grant, of, of trying to apply for a new grant was it was only 50% of, of the cost of, of the full cost of the project was, was one thing. And you really had to be, because of the limited time window that we had to, to apply for the grant, you really had to be, the term that we all use, and I'm sure you would say, is, is almost like shovels ready. Like, like you need to be ready to like break ground on the project almost immediately. And we just weren't there, right? We just, we, we didn't have the fund, the funding sources and we just, we didn't have the designs. We didn't have all of that stuff, the, the engineering. So it just, it wasn't something that really would have worked for us for a new project with the boilers or the chillers. But we had identified, both Eva and Mike Schleyhoff, a great deal of time working on projects that we had done, identified two that had been done within the time period. One project was the installation of air conditioning that included the weight room, the media center and two health classrooms at the, at the high school. And the second project was air, was another air conditioning project in the dimmer room, the head-end room and locker rooms at Ram High School. And I'm super excited to, to, to say that we got news like right before spring break, that we were awarded both of those monies for both of those grants, applications for reimbursements for those projects. And the, the, the total grant award is $412,316,000. So we're talking almost a half a million dollars in, in money that the, the district will be reimbursed. Of course, there are some strings attached to that, attached to that money, but it, those are good strings, right? And so that money needs to be used, and correct me if I'm wrong, but must be allocated to be used for the installation, replacement or upgrading of HVAC systems or other improvements in indoor air quality school buildings. So we're talking about, again, getting to the end of a shelf life potentially with some of our, you know, some of our building mechanics with our, with our boilers and our chillers. And now we're looking at the potential for having $412,000 that we could potentially allocate towards, towards that or other projects that we deem as a, a greater priority. Obviously, we're getting ready to go through the process of having some engineers come in and go through our building in totality so that we can update our capital plan. And I think having this money available to us for whatever needs are identified is, is really, really exciting for us. So, you know, again, I, I felt it was important to just share it. Eva could talk a little bit about, you know, kind of the process, where we go from here and kind of what has to happen, but I just felt it was important to share this information.
So on the reimbursable portion of the grant, the process was not clearly identified. So we need to follow up with the Office of School Construction and Grants to understand if this money is ours to do as we please. Although the first paragraph of the letter that Mr. Cohen had to sign off on leads me to believe that everything needs to be reinvested into indoor air quality projects. Once we do that and I am able to confirm with them that we're able to use the money and put back into either the capital non-recurring or the original accounts that they came from, capital improvement or capital non-recurring, and not be treated as a grant where I'd have to report back out how we extended those funds. So it might be considered grant. But in speaking with Legal Today, she has not gotten many answers for different districts that she's working with who are new. And so she doesn't anticipate that I might be successful in my challenge, but I will start reaching out to everyone and anyone will pick up the phone and ask those questions. Somebody's got to know the answer to that. So to make sure that, because I, again, we have to submit with the letter that Colin received on last Wednesday or the Wednesday before. We have to submit all paid invoices. So their department has to go through those invoices to make sure that what we paid falls under the purview of the funding source that they were affording us. If everything matches up, then we get the $412,000. If they deny certain expenditures, then we're not getting the full $412,000. So.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I'll add and I, is I just want to make sure that, you know, I recognize the work that. I recognize the work that, and I think to this as well, is the work that Eva and Michael Schleyhoffer did. I think you guys probably spent a week sitting in a, I mean, I kind of locked him in the room, but I mean, you know, but sitting in a room, just kind of going through old materials and old, like, because it was, it was just pulling up a whole lot of information. And Eva and Michael just really just did a great job and I just appreciate the work that they did.
How much was it?
Four twelve.
That's the two of them together.
Four twelve, four twelve, three sixteen.
Based on the learning about the fact that we needed to be shovel-ready for projects, at least our initial thinking, the hail mary to try to go and find projects that had been completed in the timeframe defined, I think this is all, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
And we have plenty of projects that if we are locked into using them for HVAC-based activities, we'll have no problem with doing so. Or, you know, an alternative would be other projects that are on our list. So there's plenty, it will all be reinvested, I'm quite sure.
I was just doing some quick math and look, I do want to say thanks. And I think the thing that I want to make sure, I forget sometimes that this gets very public with people, actually do listen to these recordings occasionally. I noticed that something I said, which it will always surprise me that anybody cares about something that I said, made it into the River East or something like that. So I, for lots of reasons, but one of them I want to make sure that we're pointing out is that, I mean, that represents almost a point, a percentage and a half of our budget. I mean, that's a significant gain on our part. And I think I was, I was going to make sure that we did point out the fact that, you know, I'm not sure it's 100% within the expectation of our, of the job duties for people to go back and try to rehash expenditures we've had over, how far back did those projects go, a year and a half, two years, something like that? To go back and revisit two years' worth of projects to put together kind of a hail mary of a request for a grant. But the fact that, you know, Eva, you and Mike put that time and effort and Collin, that you, you know, dedicated that resource to getting that done is incredible and it's really appreciated, all three towns appreciated to the tune of $412,000. And, I mean, when we talk about time, there's times, especially right now when we're in budget time and I'm getting various opinions on our budget, both good and bad. I mean, I think this is exactly what people are expecting and hoping for us to do and I just appreciate the fact that you represented the board very well in doing that. So thank you very much. I mean, that's incredible. And to Mike's point, I mean, I don't think there'll be any lack of projects that we can figure out how to apply that to. And I'm fairly sure that given Eva's, what's the right word? Her, how diligent she is and this stuff, I'm going to be very surprised if any of those things come back, that they're not satisfactory for the money. So that was a nice thing to talk about as well. I'm sorry.
Heather has her hand.
Heather, please, go ahead.
Did that story run in the River East?
The HVAC grant? Yeah, I think it did.
I'm not sure if it was the River East, but it hit the mainstream news.
It did, okay, great.
I think I read it in the, in the River East as well. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep, awesome. All right, which brings us to 11.2 and the financials.
Okay, so at the end of March 31st, 2023, I'm projecting a net favorable position of $100,225. Revenue this year seems to be coming in higher than anticipated, which is always a good thing. We did, we were able to invoice for two students from East Hampton who are attending our pipeline manufacturing program. This is down from last year, we had four last year, this year we have two. But I wasn't expecting any, so two is better than none. And then, of course, as our interest rates seem to be rising, we seem to be getting much more than anticipated there also, so can't complain there either.
No.
The capital improvement fund is, now has tentative digits that are pretty good. We're going to begin on June 16th to make sure that the refrigeration unit replacement starts on time as soon as school gets out so that it can be completed by August 14th, barring unforeseen circumstances, to ensure that the refrigeration is beginning of school. The detention pond is the reason we were talking to the legal department today. They were doing a review of the bidding documents that need to go out to, or bid. So she was just making sure that we have our ducks in a row and she will be getting back to us to make sure that we could go out first. The capital non-recurring fund, so I was all excited because on March 28th, we received an email from the state that they're going to provide us with a final reimbursement. They're sending it to the town of Hebron, but there is no official word that the project was closed out. So I'm not sure what's happening there. Something they want to iron out, I'm not sure what that is. Though we're still holding on to that one. And then we're also working and waiting for Tom Irwin and Associates to provide us the final drawings for the athletic field project. And tomorrow is when they're supposed to be getting that back to us. That seems to be the highlight of my report for March 31st. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any on that?
No.
Thank you. In your packet, 11.2B is food service as of March 23rd. So as of March 1st, we went back to being able to eat a breakfast and a lunch meal for free. Have not received the smart fund. So in the past, I had to track the sales so that we can calculate what the estimated smart fund balance revenue was going to be coming into us. This is not what they want us to do currently and I'm not sure personally if the reimbursement rate is the same as before, so I don't want to miss this with anyone. So I'm waiting to hear back to see if, what we're going to get for smart fund balance. But without that smart fund being taken into account on the income statement, currently we're reflecting a loss of $44,316 for this system. We still have money in our any fund balance, but we are taking a slight hit. But I'm anticipating once that smart fund money comes in, that I'll negate most of that. Are there any questions that the board might have on food service?
Is our net favorable position reflective of that 44,000 loss?
No, the net favorable position for operating is totally separate, totally separate fund.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
So 11.2C is the Student Activity Fund. That all balances with our bank accounts. And are there any questions the board might have on student activity? 11.2D, the Short-Term Investment Fund, that seems to be doing well. We reinvest yet again $1,358.40 once in March. Our rate of return, again, it moves on a daily basis, so I've included that. But we seem to be doing well with the rate, so they did a nice job managing that fund. Are there any questions from the board on this stipend?
Given that I think I've read it and I've heard that there's not going to be a significant change in the interest rates for quite a while, that may be something that continues to pay for quite a bit. Yeah, okay. I don't think so. Any other questions, Cherie? All right, thank you. Which brings us to item 12, the committee reports. First committee up on the board is Facilities. Mike?
Okay. Well, the Facility Subcommittee last met on March 28th. That time, we met with a representative from RV Associates, if I remember correctly. They were going to do a retro, let me reread this here, a retro-commissioning survey. What a retro-commissioning survey is, is an efficiency assessment of lighting, HVAC, other equipment that are energy, energy-consuming equipment throughout the school. But it's primarily related to electrical and/or HVAC. I asked some questions about insulation, windows, other things like that. Those are outside of the scope of this activity. There are some incentives to participate in this, this program. It's sponsored by Eversource. Eversource is willing to pay for the evaluation costs up to, it's 50% they're willing to pay for of those costs, I believe. And then if you, if you elect to pursue at a minimum of two improvement activities, they will, that's, that's where they'll cover the 50% and then you can borrow the balance with a 0% interest rate. So I know I'm bouncing around a little bit here, but it sounds like a viable program. We participated in it seven years ago and the savings were meaningful at that time. I believe that we had some gas, natural gas savings and we all, electricity savings. And I think for natural gas, it was four to 5% and for electricity, I think it was a 6% to 7% improvement. So however, we're not in a position right now to recommend, the Facility Subcommittee, that is to recommend to the board to pursue an investment at this time because it would be some upfront cost by the district. So we'd like to revisit this in the future and that's our recommendation to the board. So it does potentially present a great opportunity, yet again. And the other thing I will mention is that the terms of the, of the program that we participated in seven years are the same as what's being offered at this time. So our hope is that those terms remain intact in the future when we reassess. That's it for Facilities.
Any questions?
As I was going to say, we already heard about the well, so I don't want to bring that back up again.
Any questions for Facilities? Okay. Finance?
Yes. We're all well aware that we've settled on this 2.85% increase, which has been, I think, received very favorably at the three towns. There's always a couple outliers out there, but I think it's been received well. I'll remind everyone that in the packet that was handed out with the full budget, there's a number of the one-page summaries that can be shared with constituents that you may run into. The, the River East, very good tools. There have been two, well, actually three, I would say very positive articles in the River East regarding our budget and things that are, that are happening with the grant, for example. And we are allowed to do some letter writing for publications like the River East. It's, not everyone reads the River East, but the older end of the population does and they vote. So I think it is an effective way to, to get to our constituents. Of course, we have a referendum that'll be coming up in May second and, you know, hopefully we'll get a positive result out of that. And that's really what I have to say.
Yeah, Mike and Eva, the, I'm sorry, Collin and Eva, the one-pager and the way that that was constructed and both the one-pager itself and then the way it appeared in the, in the River East, I thought was an exceptional piece of work. I mean, it was really kind of painted picture exactly where we're at, what, where we were, where we're now, where we are now and exactly what's on the table. I thought it was exceptional. Heather? Yeah, please go ahead, Heather.
I'm wondering if there's just more that we can do with the grant, like, you know, if we can get links to the articles or whatever that can be shared on like the Ram Association, Education Association page or things like that. I think those are really great demonstrations of good financial management that could help in the, in the budget process and the voting.
Yeah, I agree. We could definitely, yeah, I could dig up those links and share. I, I was out of town, so I didn't see the articles about the grant or the follow-up one that they did about the budget, so I'd be curious to, I'll see.
I think I have the link second.
That'd be, that'd be helpful. Great. The one thing that I'll just mention is that that one-page document that I had created in short, the physical copies of, it, I believe that, that because it was prior to you all adopting the budget as a Board of Education, I've changed it now and it says, instead of saying proposed budget, it says the adopted budget. So there are updated, it's just updated, it's on the website, but I can certainly make copies available for board members if you wanted to have one that said adopted budget. The information is exactly the same, it just says adopted versus proposed.
Okay. Just to revisit, are we, are we provided now that we've done the adopted? What's, what is the?
So as, as a group, we can, we, we have to be very cautious about doing anything that promotes the budget, that there's essentially, once the referendum is set, which it has been done at our last meeting, we set the referendum, we can't, we can't promote, we can't, you know, say, hey, everybody go. We can tell people there is a referendum, where it is, when it is, but we really have to be cautious as an entity about promoting the budget, if that makes sense.
Right, but we could, as long as we don't tell people to vote yes, we could still provide them the link on where to find everything, the one-page flyer, we can tell them where to vote, et cetera.
Okay, so the factual information is fine, it's just not?
Yeah, don't say, go vote yes. You know, we can't tell someone how to vote. That's, I think that's the major no-no, right, Collin? Everything else is just pointing them to find out information.
100% correct. Okay, awesome. All right.
And maybe I'll just say a little something about the grant here. And speaking of grants generally, you know, monies become available from time to time for, for educational institutions, for towns. And it's, it's, it's up to, in this case, the administration to be Johnny-on-the-spot and say, okay, here's an opportunity, let's jump on this. Let's go through what is often an onerous process to get an application in. And in many cases, the grants are on a, I don't know if it's the case here, but they're on a first-come, first-served basis. And so there's a limited amount of funds. It can get used up. And I know from a bitter experience in the past in, in our town of Andover, of monies becoming available and then missing our opportunity to, to apply for that money. Things have gotten better in recent years and that's wonderful. So I just want to commend the administration for recognizing an opportunity and taking the necessary steps to get a successful application and get this money. It's, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Somebody's going to get it. Why not us, right?
Yeah.
So we have needs just like everyone else, so it's a wonderful thing.
I think it's, just to go back to, I mean, I keep going back to that number, it's almost one and a half percent of our total budget and it's, probably represents an 80, 80-some percent reflection of our capital budget, right?
Our capital budget's 525.
Right, so and what did we, and what, this was 412, so it was about 80% of it, right? That's, I mean, that's remarkable, you know? Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for finance? Negotiations, I don't think there is any at this point, right? Policy, Carrie?
So we met on the 28th and we actually had quite a lot to talk about on that meeting. So we actually had invited Sue and Heather to join us for the discussion of policy 5215, which is the student dress, dress code. I know this has come up before, we decided to kind of look at this. And I think for the most part, the consensus is we need to have, you know, some sort of consistency in policy for the dress code for, that is, represents positive for both the teachers and the students. But right now, we're focusing on the students. And she had too brought Region 17, she provided us with that information. And what everybody's going to do is everybody's going to meet back at a different time and we're going to assess everything, like try to sit down and do a kind of a workshop to figure out the best, the best thing. So to put down, and to bring to the board, I'm sorry, I got a little distracted. So that was kind of, I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head when our next meeting is, but I believe it's at the end of this month. So all of us are going to come together and after reviewing some of these policies again. So any questions on that one? I have a few more to, okay. So aside from that, we also, Collin had explained, told us a- I have a few more to, okay. So aside from that, we also, Colin had explained, told us about an audit that has um, an audit that has come up with, oh gosh, what's it called? Colin, shoot.
The, the school lunch charging?
It's been a good one. I'm sorry. I couldn't remember the attorney's name. So in any case, they um, they did an audit on all of our policies, which I want to say most of them were looked at back in two thousand thirteen. And from that point, it looks like we have several that need to be reviewed and have some changes made. So we're going to be working on that in, in the policy committee. We also had addressed the policy for homework, which has come up several times by concerned parents. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion. And I think we pretty much were all in agreement. We also had the administration there as well and you know, it's hard to, it's very difficult to put that on teachers. We have every student's different, every teacher's different. So a sudden policy is very limited. Um, and I think that what we need to just let the parents know, if there are these concerns, they can work with the administration of both schools and the teachers to work something out with them for their child. Rather than trying to put a blanket policy out for everybody, because it also depends on, you know, some people take a heavy load of AP classes, which essentially will result in a lot more homework. So that's what we came up with for that. And then the last one was the school lunch charging, which is policy fifty five forty. So right now, we all know they're getting the one breakfast, one lunch. But now there are people that have extensive negative balances. And the children are still continuing to take additions such as like ice cream, snacks, things that are not included in the free lunch program. So I think we, we basically all decided that what we need to do is we need to work with the lunch staff and let them know and address it to the parents, which the schools were going to do in their newsletters. That if they have a negative balance, they are not going to be able to continue charging for these extras. Colin, if I missed anything, please let me know.
You did fantastic, Carrie.
Hey, I honestly, right now feel like the uh, seventh and eighth graders did a much better presentation.
It's a hard act to follow, Carrie.
It really is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for uh, for policy?
Carrie, if I could just add, add one thing. It's that uh, there was quite a list of policies to be updated. And uh, kind of scary if you look at it all at once. So it's something we're, we're gonna have to take a bite at a time.
Yeah, I think that this was something that Colin and I talked about pretty much right when you first came on board, I think. And what, what, all we really wanted to do with this was um, we always, I think that the, you know, previous boards have always been very proactive about keeping a kind of a, a, a on deck list of capital and projects, um, facilities projects. And uh, we wanted to do something similar from the policy perspective, knowing that there was probably lots of things that, even if they're minor, like they're, you know, probably just minor updates to reference the appropriate legislative, you know, references or whatever the case may be. There's probably a lot of that lives in our policy, given that it hasn't been really looked at in detail since, when did you say, Carrie, two thousand thirteen or fourteen?
Yes, I think it's, it was two thousand thirteen, correct Colin?
That sounds right. I mean, it varies from policy to policy, but there's.
Essential timeframe.
Yes. So I mean, I'm glad we've got it on, I'm glad we've got a kind of, you know, a, a list of what we need to accomplish. And I, I'm, I'm confident that the policy committee will prioritize it, you know, in, in concert with what Colin recommends and, and will, you know, put the ones that are the most impactful upfront. And obviously ones that probably have legal ramifications, probably need to lean towards the top. But I, I think it's a great list and I appreciate you guys going through that exercise and and trying to knock it off because that's uh, you know, because we'll, we'll get to the end of that list and then it'll be time to do a new audit to update it. So um, great, okay. Um, which brings us to uh, program. Mary?
Yes, um, we, I, I don't believe we've had a meeting since our last um, regular board meeting where we shared out that we were creating the informational flyer and, which has subsequently been shared. So we have a meet, our next meeting is scheduled, I believe, for May fourth. And so there's really nothing I think we need to report other than a flyer is out there.
Who, who put that flyer together?
Uh, so it was, we had worked on it. We had shared a draft actually of what the flyer, we had anticipated it being on two pages. Believe it or not, we shared it with the River East and they took that information and they just formatted it to fit onto a single page. And so I communicated with the River East and I said, hey, you did a great job with this. Would you allow us to use this? And, and I happened to go to high school with the guy that I was dealing with and he said, sure Colin. And so I want to thank the River East for their formatting capabilities. It was, it was very beneficial for us.
Awesome, nice, great. Okay, uh, anything else, Mary?
I don't believe so.
Okay, awesome. Any questions for uh, for program? Okay, so it leaves us to our facilitators and I'll go to, um, I'll just talk about Eastcon real quick. So uh, you know, with, again, I, I'm learning, I'm in heavy duty learning mode when it comes to Eastcon, only that I've only been in the kind of sitting in that representative or facilitator's position for a couple of months. But having been able to kind of dig in a little bit and understand that entity a little better, I, I almost feel like there's not a whole lot that I can kind of share here that's probably bringing people up to speed. Um, necessarily as it is, just continuing to um, share what I learned to other board members who may probably sit in the, that representative spot at some point when I'm not in it anymore. But uh, you know, the keys to that thing is that it's a, it's essentially one of, I want to say six, is that right? Regional entities?
Yes.
And you know, I wondered while Eastcon, what does that exactly mean? They, they have a, I mean, you see them, they're, they're in the school all day. I mean, I've run into two or three just um, you know, in the last month or so, randomly walking down the hallway for something. They are, uh, provide a, a number of especially special ed services, but, but also, you know, very um, uh, kind of quirky, um, they fill in the blanks, especially for small regional uh, schools. Things like they, um, I don't think they do it here, but they, they'll provide food service, um, senior leadership at very, very small school systems who wouldn't be able to afford a full-time food, you know, service professional for that. Um, and then they kind of share that, that, um, that overhead and they share that, that work service hours uh, around so that it, it provides the opportunity to have a professional service for multiple different schools and they can all kind of pool their money. And it's a lot of different things. They're responsible for a lot of the transportation, especially for, I think, for the special ed transportation that um, that we use. So they, they basically are kind of like this entity that sort of floats around, you know, one of their, the six regions here in the state. And sort of just fill in the blanks for the schools where maybe they wouldn't necessarily be able to afford a particular resource. And um, and they're constantly kind of plugging away like what's, they're, they're kind of a pseudo, they're not, not for profit, but they're not um, but they're not um, revenue neutral. So they, uh, they're constantly trying to find new ways to bring in new revenue to fund new projects. Um, and so uh, you know, in the back of your mind, as we think about things that we're budgeting for, services that we're, you know, working on or or as part of the strategic plan, if there's some sort of a hole that we see that maybe isn't something that's going to be filled by rim, they're very open to suggestions about potential services they might provide that would uh, again, fill in another blank or a hole for, for different schools.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, right? So when we had the public hearing the other week, a member of the public stood up and talked about, you know, hey, in these small districts, we need to talk about, look at regionalization, right? I'm not saying it's going in that direction completely, but really they do enable districts that don't have the need for a full-time, I'm making it up, you know, a full-time occupational therapy assistant or a full-time this, or it allows you to share those regionalized services because you have this district that's taking the person, you know, as a point six FTE and this person, but they're not really, they're not an employee of ours, you're just contracting with them. So it really does provide a lot of regionalization of services for these, for smaller school districts like us. It's, it, it is a great resource.
They also run a couple of the Magnus.
They do.
Yeah, they're directly responsible for a couple of the Magnus schools. And the only thing I'll, I mean, with regard to an update, Eastcon, you know, I, I don't know enough about kind of the previous year's worth of um, issues that they had to characterize who did what or didn't do what. So I'll, I'll just avoid that. But um, there's definitely been some financial challenges for that entity that um, was under a previous administration. They've got a new gentleman down there who's been there for, hello Eric.
He started, I think, July.
July, so he's been there about six months, but uh, it, well, Eric as well as his team that is uh, the, the leadership team around him is uh, doing everything that I think you can do and doing a pretty uh, exceptional job at trying to right that ship and, and put it in a, in a much better financial standing than it. So that we make sure it continues to provide the service.
And, and I'll just, I'll just highlight too, you know, um, Eric Protulis, who's the director, was actually, I think he started his career here at Ram. He was a school psychologist and a director of people's services for us. He um, Eastcon is facilitating our strategic planning improvement process. And, and Eric basically reached out to me and said, would you mind if I was involved in the process? He said, I have a vested interest in Ram. I want to make sure that all things are, are good there. Um, and he said, I need to learn more about how this process plays out and Ram is the place where I want to learn how the process plays out. So it's great to have his hands-on involvement in this process. Uh, he's, uh, he's been a great partner for us.
Get a little extra attention for our money. So anyway, so that's, that's, that's Eastcon. Any questions for me? Uh, Carrie, can you talk about Cabe?
I really have nothing new to report on Cabe today.
Anything that you're aware of on Cabe?
No.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen much either. Okay, awesome. All right, well, that brings us to item uh, thirteen, which is public comment. Hebron, Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that there's nobody physically present that wants to give public comment, given that I'm only staring at our two principals. Uh, if that's not the case, then I'll go turn it over to online. Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment? Make yourself known or raise your digital hand or Eric? Okay, Eric has given me the left and right, it says no. So at that point, we'll move on to item fourteen, which is the informational items. Just uh, turn it over Colin, any calendar events that are critical that you think?
So you know, you talked a little bit about some of them earlier. It's an exciting time, Rowan was talking about, you know, the end of the school year, so that we're starting to find ourselves getting into those end we're not quite to the end of the school year, so don't get too excited as students, but um, you know, we've got junior prom coming up. We've got senior, uh, senior prom as it was called. Um, I think that's not until May. We have um, I think sixth grade orientation for our elementary schools. That was right before, uh, but I thought students were going to be coming, right?
Students are coming this weekend.
That's what, yeah, that's what I was talking, so, so the students are going to be coming and doing their visits uh, to Rams from the, from the three different elementary districts, which certainly brings a level of excitement. Um, I was uh, I was making sure that I was wandering around the school at the high school when the middle schoolers came up to the high school. That was fun to see them all walking around. So I, I look forward to this week and seeing those middle school students come up and uh, you know, just again, mark your calendar for June first, if you don't already have it on there for the evening of the arts. It's a, it's a great event and we're worthwhile for being here.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, concerns, questions about calendar? Okay, which brings us to fourteen point two. Any issues, trends, anything with in-school or out-of-school suspension reports that uh, are noteworthy?
No, no trends and I'm hoping that they stay low as we near the end of the school year. Sometimes has an, yeah, I see our principals are finger is crossing, knocking on wood, so.
Okay, all right. Which brings us to item fifteen, which is uh, the German. I'll entertain him and motion to adjourn. Move, Gabe is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you all very much.